We're live. Calling me to order, Clark, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
DePena?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Councilmember Natar will not be attending this CD, Councilmember Rovell?
Here.
Mr. Mobergh?
President.
Mayor Melman?
Here. Sunshine Dennis?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and in the December 20th issue of the Bellev Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bellev Town Hall Bulletin Board and copies are filed in municipal clerk's packets.
Pleasure leadings?
I am pleased to lead the flag of the United States of America and to the law of which stands our nation under God, the religion of liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, instead of going right into executive session, I have invited our township engineer here, Mr. Haritz from Nazer Engineering. He's the one that deals predominantly with our sewer and water issues. So we just asked him to come before the council just to give us, the governing body, and the benefit of those viewing live, or will be eventually watching this, an update on the North Water situation.
Okay, so just so the council knows, I tried contacting the, I did contact the Newark City, the water operator and the individual in charge of the water system. They haven't got back to me yet to see what measures they are taking at their treatment plants up at the reservoirs to reduce the, the big thing now is you read the paper, the HAA5s, the disinfectant byproducts. So as soon as I get that information, I will pass it on to the council. But just so, you know, we're not alone with this. We've, you know, Bellevils exceeded the minimum containment level, Newark's exceeded it, Nutley Field's exceeded it, and Nutley just exceeded it. So the threat, the common thread is we're all purchasing water from Newark.
Right, so we're just, the benefit of people that are here could be watching, we're a customer, we buy our water. And we've been, I've been seeing these notices come through town hall and being posted on the website and everywhere for a month now. One notice that I saw, and correct me if it's not the current notice, one notice I saw basically says that it's at the level of we have the notice our residents.
Correct.
But explain, is it still the same exact notice where if you drink 50 gallons of water?
Yeah, well, the, the, the thing with these disinfectant byproducts, there's no short-term health effects. So if Newark, the faster Newark cleans this up, the better off we'll all be. And as far as long-term, that goes back to, you'd have to drink a gallon of water every day for 70 years, and then you have a one-in-a-million chance of getting cancer. So the bottom line is Newark, as soon as Newark cleans up their act, we'll all be better off.
But it's not an overnight fix for Newark. Because I think what's happening, people are getting confused between Newark's lead issue with their lead infrastructure. We don't have...
We have lead services, we don't have lead...
Well, we don't have lead services. Individual homeowners.
The homeowners have lead services.
Not us.
No, no, we don't have lead pipes, correct.
Certain homeowners may or may not have lead service going through the street to their houses.
Yeah, so the important thing about, okay, so disinfectant by price, I'll get you whatever, whatever, I'll get you the information regarding what measures they're taking to remediate that problem, and as soon as I get that, I'll pass it on to you. As far as the lead services are, Newark is, they were using it, and it was in the papers, they were using the silicate to coat the inside of the pipes to prevent the lead from leaking into the water. And that, that fails, that has been failing. So now Newark's gonna switch to a orthophosphate. They, they've issued a very thick report by an independent engineering company. So as soon as they make that change, hopefully that cleans up, even with people's lead services, it should coat everything right into your home.
Right, I just want everybody to make sure that they understand, lead service lines, a service line means the street to the house.
Correct.
Which is the homeowner's responsibility.
Right.
So I bought my, my house 12 years ago, I excavated my driveway, and at that time I changed my, my service line from lead, I guess copper was it? Copper?
You should have copper anyway.
No, that, not my, my office.
Oh, your office, yes.
I changed it myself.
No, pledge of states rules.
So what is, what is or has the township been doing to just, even though we're not the supplier, are we instituting a flush program?
We're gonna start up again as soon as the stop freezes.
We're doing that, right?
Yes, we're flushing lines. Actually, I'm gonna get a proposal to Moro for a, the asset management plan so we can start locate, getting, we gotta get up the snuff with the DEP with an asset management plan and get it on a GAS. And then from there, we can work on doing a system. We also put in a CDBG grant to start relining pipes this year. So we usually get close to $400,000 so we can throw that towards, start relining some pipes in the bad areas of town.
And when people hear on the news that Newark is supplying water filters, that's predominantly because Newark has a lead infrastructure.
Correct.
So, okay, I just wanna make that very clear.
There are, they, they, yeah, they issued the water, that was their quickest solution for them.
Was their fix?
Yeah, that was the easiest fix.
And because Newark's infrastructure extends into Bellev because Silver Lake, our Silver Lake residents are also eligible.
Yes, I know Marie got a filter.
Right, I was there handing them out.
They own, Newark owns, that's their franchise area, Silver Lake is in their franchise area. I guess it's south of Newark Avenue is all Newark's water. So as soon as I get some information regarding...
Mayor, if I might just want to make a clarification, once that asset management plan is completed, that will what, make us eligible to apply?
To apply for EIT money.
It's Environmental Infrastructure Trust money, that's what it is.
Very low-interest money. And then we can start making some big improvements, which we really need.
Right, you're just cleaning, cement relining, and a lot of valve changing, and a lot of infrastructure repairs that need to be done.
Sure.
Any council members have any questions?
None.
No? Okay, can you just forward us that information once?
As soon as I get it, yeah. And just, you know, Mayor, we posted something about the disinfectant by price on the website that explains some of the stuff we just talked about.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're supposed to be going into executive session, although I do see some people that may be here for a presentation. If they are here, we might just do the presentation first before going into executive. Yeah, I see people out there.
They're just people.
I see what I see.
They're just humans, way back.
Or child is part of the...
Nope, that's cabin, that's cabin.
Okay, I don't think everybody's here for a presentation, so we're gonna continue with the agenda with item number five. We need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive?
Second.
A motion made in second, Clark, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli. DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mr. Mobergh?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes, the reason why we're going to executive session is that we need contract negotiations. At this point, unfortunately, we are gonna have to clear the rooms. We should not be all that long, we will definitely be inviting you back as soon as we rejoin the meeting, no action will be taken. We then went into executive session, we had to clear the room, we're now coming out of executive session, we had a motion to do so, but now we're at number six on our agenda, which is presentations for the dignitaries of 2019, Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. I believe Councilman Cosarelli is gonna take it from here.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have with us all the honorees for the 2019 St. Patrick's Day Parade, which will be in Nutley on this Saturday coming up. And before anything, I just want to introduce Tom McHenry, he's the president, president or chairman?
President.
President, yeah, good. The movie Tom, if you wanna stand up and say a little bit about the parade and what's going on this weekend?
Thank you, my council, thank you, Mayor, council. I'm again a president, Nutley Irish, been president for 12 years. When we just started out, we were Bellev, Nutley together, and then Bellev, you know, after PJ pissed away Pete Donilon, Bellev, a lot of Bellev residents came to us, to Nutley, so it's really like Nutley-Bevel, you know? We consider Bellev people with us every year, there's always, you know, it's like a dual thing. So I wanna invite you to the parade Saturday, you know, the weather might not be good, but it's gonna be a wonderful day. Some of us were with us Saturday night, had a good time. I invite you to come out there, a lot of Bellev people out there, Nutley people. And I just wanna say, by Saturday, proud of the dignitaries we have this year, there's Bellev people, you know, it's one big thing, one happy thing, so I'd like to see you Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. What time is downtown?
2:00, 1:00. We have a 10 o'clock mass at St. Mary's.
1:00 step off at St. Mary's?
At that Holy Family, the masses at St. Mary's at 10, then we go to Holy Family, we step off at 1.
Holy Family before you step off?
Yes, we have a mass at St. Mary's, so two churches. You start today, it's very good.
I'm wearing my green tie for this.
All right, you can barely see it. All right, so I will start off with our grand marshal, Ed Sagers, who is a Bellev guy? Thank you. Ed, stand up, come up here, I'm gonna, but I'm gonna read into the mic. Whereas Edward Sagers, Senior, has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the grand marshal of the 41st Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. Whereas Ed Sagers was born in Lima, Iowa, to Edward and Anita.
Ohio?
Ohio, yeah, yeah.
Ohio?
Yeah, to Edward and Anita, the John Sagers. Attended Lima Central Catholic High School, and then went on to serve his country in the United States Navy, and is proud to be associated with the Catholic War Veterans, Father Owens Post 1187 and American Legion Post 105. Whereas Ed Sagers began his service to Bellev in the 1980s with the Bellev Chamber of Commerce, and through the years has been involved in many ways throughout the community, including chairing the kickoff breakfast to celebrate Bellev's 150th birthday, supporting St. Peter's Parish, serving the Lions Club in many capacities, and as an active member of the Bellev Knights of Columbus, and now defunct Bellev Irish American Association, and now the Nutley Irish American Association. Whereas Ed Sagers has been honored and recognized for his years of community service by the Bellev Irish American Association, the Kevin Candy Civic Association, and is proud to be associated with the Newark-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee as a delegate, trustee, and sergeant-at-arms. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the township of Bellev, which do share in celebration of this event, and do hereby congratulate Edward Sager, Senior, for being named grand marshal by the Nutley Irish American Association.
Mayor, council, thank you. Moro, thank you. Everybody, please come out Saturday. Chief, how are you?
Eddie, congratulations.
Thank you. Please come out Saturday to, to join us in the parade, it's gonna be a good one, Saturday, March 2nd. 1:00 step off from Saint, from Holy Family.
Holy Family.
Can't be saying Saint. It's an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to be grand marshal of this parade, and 40 really, really great people that had this position before me, and it's something that I'll always treasure, and my name will always be in the back of that book.
Next up, we have Councilman Rovell.
Whereas Noreen E. Havron has been selected as the Nutley Irish American Association as the deputy grand marshal at the 41st Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. And Noreen, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna truncate this a little bit.
Uh-oh, now I'm afraid.
No, I'm gonna ad lib a little bit.
That's why I'm afraid.
I've known her for a long time, I won't go too far off. I've known Noreen for a long time, she took care of my mom for nine years, she now takes care of my mother-in-law, which, let that go. She doesn't remember anything, anyway. So, Noreen, I, I'm pleased to deliver this to you, because you've done such great work, and I'm so proud that we're able to honor you. And, I mean, you can go home and read all this, and you know who you are, your master's the great Kane, you're seated all time, but I mean, what really, to me, defines you is Joe Peggins, and God bless you for it. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to the Nutley Irish and everyone here, and I look forward to Saturday.
Next, we have Councilwoman DePena.
Kelly Cole. Whereas Kelly Cole has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the parade queen of the 41st Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. Kelly's born in Bellev, in Bellev, moved to Nutley when she was nine years old. Since she was a young girl, Kelly has always enjoyed donating to and volunteering her time to food banks and toy drives. Kelly is the daughter of Walter and Lisa Cole, and younger sister to Kristen Cole. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, municipal council of the township of Bellev wish to share in the celebration of this event, and do hereby congratulate Kelly Cole for being named parade queen by the Nutley Irish American Association, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Next, we have Councilman Graziano.
Alan McGill. Whereas Alan McGill has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the 2019 Man of the Year for the 41st Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas, born and raised in Jersey City, Ambeon, New Jersey, by his late parents Gene and Arthur McGill, Alan is the fifth child in a family of six children. And whereas, Alan is a member of the Nutley Irish American Association, where he volunteers his time for many of his events and fundraisers, serves as the Nutley Irish American Association post-party chair for over five years, and considers all members of the Nutley Irish to be an extension of his own family, and has been part of the Relay of Life team, raising funds for the American Cancer Society in memory of past family members. And whereas, Alan resides in Nutley with his wife, with his lovely wife Sherri, and their three amazing and beautiful daughters, participating in town events and activities, and loves being part of the community for the past 30 years, and has been employed by the Copy Shop Inc., and authorized the Sheba copier dealer in Nutley. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council, mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellev wishes to share in the celebration of this event, and do hereby congratulate Alan McGill for being named the 2019 Man of the Year by the Nutley Irish American Association, and wishes him good health and continued success in his future.
Congratulations.
Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, I look forward to the parade, it should be an amazing time, and please try and make the post-parade party, it's really amazing, it's good time, good food, good music, Captain O'Neil.
Next up, we have Councilwoman Burke.
I guess I got the longest one, because I think Richard Kavanaugh did a lot of stuff.
Somebody must have put some extra stuff in there. Maybe who wrote it? It's all about your wife.
Whereas Richard Kavanaugh has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the 2019 Firefighter of the Year for the 41st Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas Rich's Irish heritage goes back to his paternal grandparents, Sabina Keely, born in County Clear, immigrated to America in 1915, and Joseph Kavanaugh, born in County Tipperary, who immigrated to America and enlisted in the United States Army. Together, they had 10 children and made their home in Bronx. Whereas Rich began his fire service career with the Bellev Fire Department in 1996, rising through the ranks from lieutenant in 2006 to captain in 2011, and currently serving as battalion chief. I have a problem at home because my dog was alone, so.
Did he swallow the culture?
Yes, yes, New Jersey Firefighter Mutual Association presented Rich with the State Silver Medal of Valor, and in 2018, he has been nominated to receive the Department of Defense Patriot Award. And whereas Rich is married to his wife Kelly, and lives in West Caldwell with their son, John Joseph, who has the distinct honor of being named after his great grandfather. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellev wish to share in the celebration of this event, and do hereby congratulate Richard Kavanaugh for being named the 2019 Firefighter of the Year by the Nutley Irish American Association, and wishes him good health and continued success in the future.
I'll meet you halfway.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Just like to thank the mayor, council, township manager, of course, the clerk.
Don't forget the clerk.
And probably you all to come out for the parade, it's a great time, and it's always a pleasure and an honor to represent my brothers in blue. Thanks for coming out, thanks.
We're gonna go on with the next portion of our meeting, but we will give a two-minute break if anybody that may have received this wanted necessarily to leave and exit, you can do so now.
That's a chance.
That's a chance. Thank you, everybody.
I truly noted, Mr. Reddick.
Amazon Prime, two-day shipping.
He always looks like money, boy.
Okay, so we're gonna move right on to item number seven, which is deeper than minutes.
Our meeting, January 26th.
Okay, motion made in second, Clark, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mr. Mobergh?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Board of manager? Yes, thank you, Mayor. On February 11th to the 15th, we patched, repatched the water ditch at 681 Main Street, which was a 10-by-30-foot patch in Franklin and Hilton, and also one on Clermont Place. On February 12th, the snowstorm, we salted the plowed streets, and we used 150 tons of salt. Also on the 12th, we had a water main break, and we replaced 6-foot, 12-inch water main and one gate valve. On the 19th, we trimmed various trees on Floyd Street, we did a little bit of overlook, and we also trimmed trees on Baldwin Place between Jualman and Minker. On the 20th, we also, there was another snowstorm, we salted the plowed streets, and used another 100 tons of salt, and we grinded various stumps throughout the town, mainly on New Street, Rossmore, Lake Street, Bell Street, and that's it, and we continue to fill potholes as they become a paradise. Enjoy, Mayor. Thank you. Next up, we have a board of the mayor.
Take a question?
You have a question?
Yes. Just two questions, Mr. Tucci. The seed building lighting project, I guess we're waiting for the budget to get passed to get the rest of the lights or something?
Correct.
Is that what's going on? Do you have any of the timeframes that you're thinking of?
I'm about halfway through the first pass.
Okay.
I'm shooting for introduction on March 19th. I just received the actual expanded numbers from 2018, so I need to move pretty quickly, go through the second half, and then sit down with the department heads to get something that resembles something of order, so I can present it to you and we can begin talking about it.
Do you wanna talk about IT of the year, watching?
No, you can do it. You can do that.
I spoke to Councilwoman Graziano last night.
Or you can do it now. It's a little warm in here. So, next up, we have the report of the mayor. Contrary to previous meetings, I have a relatively short report. So tomorrow, we have an event at the Bellev Public Library, it's the first time in the history of Bellev, the township and the library are doing a joint event, we're calling it After Hours, After Hours Lecture in the Conservatory. The Conservatory is the second floor, it's like, they used to call it the atrium, now they wanna call it the conservatory. So it's an after-hours lecture there, it's featuring around our month-long Black History Month exhibit. For those of you who don't know and might be interested, I would strongly Google, Bellev has a very strong, vast Black history, and something we're very proud of. And we have a month-long exhibit that's gonna basically be ending on the 28th, but tomorrow is the event, we're gonna be giving a lecture on Bellev's history, and we do have a featured guest speaker, Newark Mayor Ross Baraka, he's an educator, a poet, and he's gonna be our special guest speaker, and he's gonna conclude the night and basically close the exhibit off. Other than that, we have, this Saturday, as you've heard, we have the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Step Off is 1:00 at Holy Family, encourage you all to be there. After that, we have coming up sometime, and we think late March is gonna be Bellev's first-ever restaurant week, we've been trying to do a lot of new first-time events, we've done everything from a renewed Veterans Day parade, we've done a 5K run, we've done some other first-time events. Butoch Festival, thank you, now we're doing a restaurant week, we have, we actually probably don't have as many restaurants as you think that fall in the category of restaurant, to us, a restaurant is waitress or waiter service, a separate dining area, the ability to serve dessert, so we can do a prefix menu, we're probably looking at 10 to 12 different restaurants participating in that, that's gonna be late March, just so the weather gets a little better. After that, scholarships, I'm told from the Bellev School District that scholarship opportunities are out, I believe, although there's been a little bit of mixed information, I believe now, if you want, if you're an organization or just somebody that wants to create a scholarship, I believe those applications are out, I'm aware of that, because we've been waiting for that to come out so we could offer a 5K proceeds scholarship that we promised when we did the 5K run, so I'm told that those applications are out, anybody else that wants to participate, I would absolutely do so. And last but not least, recently, in a major publication statewide called NJ Cops Magazine, it goes to about 35,000 active police officers, our Bellev's finest, were honored with a three-page spread in that, basically giving accolades to our fine chief and his commitment to community policing, so I just wanna congratulate the chief on that, and... For those of you who haven't seen it on the internet or anything, it's basically a full three-page spread that talks a lot about our community policing initiatives, that I would know the chief really does pursue, he's got the full support of this mayor and council on that, and it actually correlates to a recent accolade that Bellev went through, I believe it was a 12 or 13 or 14% overall crime reduction. And we associate that, to a point, with some more community policing. So everything from walking children to school, to everything else that we do with cops on bikes and getting kids and children familiar with police officers, we're seeing the benefit of that, and it's great that Bellev's finally starting to get some positive news. So obviously, I don't wanna miss the opportunity to promote that, when and do, we do get some positive news, so once again, to our chief, to our fine police department, the job well done. And with that said, we're gonna go right into committee reports, I'll start with Councilman Rovell to finish his report first.
So, I kinda got caught in the middle there, because one of the things, I talked to Tom last night, we're gonna have a meeting with the township manager and the IT people to kinda get an idea of the next steps, but one of the things I wanted the manager to look at is IT infrastructure grants, because I think that's one of the, one of the helps we could, we could definitely use, if there's such a thing out there. Mr. Reddick? IT, IT infrastructure grants, can we check with our grants people to see if there's anything out there for us? That make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, it could be any, it could be anything, just infrastructure, cybersecurity, it could be all kinds, anything other IT, other technology.
Yeah, whatever we can help, you know, get to help us here, we're definitely doing work. Okay, good, we're good. Yeah, one, one communication from the Green Team project coordinator, Gabby Meany, that I received, I just wanted to read this aloud, it was an email she sent out this past Thursday, she was asked to come and meet with the science teachers at Bellev High School, each year they plan a field trip to the Meadowlands Environmental Center, where she conducts ecological programs and coordinates volunteer projects. They told me they have, the high school has a Green Team and are starting an environmental club. Their Green Team received the Sustainable New Jersey Schools Grant for $2,000 to establish a schoolyard habitat at elementary schools number nine.
a schoolyard habitat at elementary schools number nine and 10. She's gone to help them. She then told them that she was the coordinator for Sustainable New Jersey for the township and that we have a Green Team and they are ecstatic. She's going to put some thought into how she could assist them. She's going to collaborate on projects that will benefit both the high school Green Team and the township Green Team. So I just want to thank, first of all, her for doing the work on this and also thank you to the Board of Ed members that are here, Mr. Sheldon and Barrera, for encouraging your students to work towards a common goal for the township. Thank you.
Counselor Tantoni?
Thank you. I'd like to bring like to two different events. March is Women's History Month and I am coordinating the first Women Empowerment Breakfast with the support of the mayor and council. This will be Saturday, March 23rd, from 9 to 12:00. And the focus of this event is on women's health and physical health. It's in partnership with Clara Mas, Sanitas, and Horizon. And the goal is, this is open for the public, it's completely free, the goal is to raise awareness of the services that we have within our township for women's health in parts too, whether it's physical, mental health, as well as support systems that we provide, network, empower each other, and just be able to get to know each other as well. So I welcome everyone and I hope that, you know, many of the women can support. RSVP information will be on the township website because our space is limited. Also, in the month of April, April is Autism Awareness Month. So we, I've been working with Councilman Cosarelli and a great team where we're hosting our first Bellevle Community Color Run. And as I expressed in the previous meeting, Color Run, this is not a 5K, it's not a competitive phase, it's just a fun run where people are sprinkled with color powder and all proceeds will go to support our local schools or local special needs classrooms, as well as maybe New Jersey organizations that we are to identify. Actually, Nick Candito, who is part of this committee, is here and he's spearheading, doing an amazing job. We had assemblies in the, in the schools, we're doing this in collaboration with the Board of Education, Dr. Tomko in our Board of Education trustees, but everyone is collaborating. All the funds will be distributed within the schools. So we had the assemblies in the schools, packets have been distributed for children to sign up. It's only $30. This is April 6th, at 9:00 AM begins the check-in and then the fun run starts at 10:00 AM. So all the information will be posted, it's already posted on our website, actually, so that you can register. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yes, just like to share with everybody that I've been, I was approached from a gentleman who has a baseball team, it's a men's league, that's a baseball league, they're called New Jersey Tigers. They're looking to rent our varsity field over at the high school for only home games. They're very generous, they're looking to donate money and also donate clay. I've been sharing, I've worked, shared with Mr. Tucci, and they're looking for Sundays in April, May, and June. So just wanted to share that with everybody so we can see where we can go with that.
Varsity field?
It's the varsity idea on Sundays, but we don't use it for games. We don't use it for games on Sundays.
As long as we all use it for games.
Correct. Bellevle's always first, so.
Absolutely. First, cool.
Intend, communications?
Letter of resignation received from Gerard Corbo, Coordinator of the Office of Emergency Management.
To accept? Court call or roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Big letter received from Richard Tomko, Superintendent of Bellevle Public Schools, requesting the mayor and council to consider a no-let turn at the end of Buccaneer Drive at Bellevle High School during the hours of 7:30 AM to 8:30 and 2 PM to 3 PM.
Can we accept and/or refer?
Coming on the drive.
Yeah, okay. Do you have a motion to accept and refer to traffic?
Motion, second.
Motion made in second, court call or roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
C, letter received from Armin and Rockin Rescue, they're giving the council their action plan for 2018 and 2019.
I'm not sure how we put the.
I don't think we're going to get that. I mean, are they going to come? I don't think so. They give us a budget, so.
I saw that email. We didn't.
We didn't get a budget, so.
So that's fine. And then, next one?
D, letter received from Michael Melham appointing Deputy Chief Martin Lutz as Coordinator of the Office of Emergency Management, set term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Motion accepted. Second, but there is no motion.
And mayor, I have an additional communication. I have a letter from Minister John Gabriel, who owns a piece of property at 35 Washington, Wachong Avenue, and he would like to purchase town-owned property located at 37 Washington, Wachong Avenue, excuse me.
We don't really accept that, right?
Good attorney.
It's just noted, right?
Yeah.
Just note there's a process that the town.
There's a process, you can't, if the town wishes to sell it, it has to be auctioned off because it's a billable lot, so.
Good, the motion for public comment?
Motion.
Second. Motion made in second to open the, our public comment, court call or roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Ms. Frank Tantoni?
Yes. Thank you.
Sure.
I would like to, Phil Sfresia, Tony, on 29th and Prospect Avenue in Bellevle. I would like to know since we passed the ordinance on the energy for Bellevle, that you want to supplement or you want to change our, from PSCNG to the cellular company, you had stated we were going to have hearings. I want to know when they're going to be.
They're not scheduled yet.
Excuse me?
They're not scheduled yet.
All right, because I think the hearing should have been before the ordinance was passed. Because I don't know if you have gone onto the internet, but Bluefield has put out a statement that they are opting out of it because they find that it has gone up in price and they're putting all their citizens back on PSCNG. So I don't think it's really going to work if we change our energy provider. So I really think you should just now avoid it. And I wanted to ask, are we going to have a forum on the marijuana that you had stated we were going to?
We're going to, I'll, I'll, I'll let you finish your comments before I come on.
All right, because I have a lot of articles I've been cutting out that are from police chiefs and everything from New York State because they want to pass it there. Police chiefs, there are sergeants and all, they are against it because they feel it's going to cause a lot of problems and a lot of accidents and they don't feel it's good for their people, for their community. And I hope that our police force will join in with them and go against it because, let me tell you of an incident. I go, I go to my daughter's Roseland every day to babysit. Well, last year, a year and a half ago, I was going over Lakeside Drive and as I passed P Street, I just got there when the police got there, and this pregnant woman and her brother were hit by a car by a resident from Bellevle who was high on drugs and killed a woman and her feet and her baby. I'll never forget this man's eyes as he laid on that ground looking up in shock. We got to do something, we can't legalize marijuana because as it's been stated and as articles I have.
Ms. Frank Tantoni, we're not voting ever to legalize marijuana here.
Well, then you vote to not permit it in the town, as Norwegians, that they don't permit it in our town. Because we are right next to Newark, we are next to a lot of towns that may want it. We have to stop it. We have the DARE program and this is like double talk, it had one side of your mouth and the other side. Don't do drugs for when you read 18, you could smoke a weed. This is sick. So please, do not do anything about it. Don't legalize having it in Bellevle.
Thank you. Mr. Flesch? You know what, Mr. Flesch, before you start?
Yes.
I did promise Ms. Frank Tantoni, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
With regard to the energy, there's a lot of information out there. I agree with you, Ms. Frank Tantoni, it would be great to have public hearings and educate people, but we had to vote to create the program first. Part of the program is the public hearings that they do, including representatives of the state BPU, where public utilities would be here. There's been multiple forums there, we're taking at least two to three with letters that go out. So we had to create the program to, in order to have the public hearings. Nobody's obligated to anything yet. We might very well go out to auction and if the auction price is not cheaper, the fixed price that we could set is not cheaper than PSCNG's rate, we don't even do it. So I know there's been a lot of information out there. I did put a long statement out there on Facebook, linked into my page. There's even been people that have talked about this Bluefield press release. I personally talked to the mayor of Bluefield and what I did too was I actually read the press release.
Yeah, I have, right.
And anybody that wants to read it, I have it right in front of me, so I'm going to read portions of it, Ms. Frank Tantoni.
I have.
This press, this press release, which I'm going to read portions of, the whole version of it can be found on my website or if you Google it. But I have the whole thing here. It actually proves that it works.
It works.
Because, thank you.
They want to make the hops out.
Well, it proves that it works. They say there that it saved the residents of Bluefield hundreds of thousands of dollars. And what happened since 2015? Since 2015, because of the group buying power, you can go in there, you set a fixed rate that mathematically and statistically has to be lower than PSCNG's rate. It is not the people that ring your doorbells, it's not the people that scam you and surcharge you. This is a group buying power that would do that. Bluefield press release, and I have it right in front of me, states that because their two-year term expired, they went back out to auction and the auction price was more than PSCNG's, therefore, everybody went right back to PSCNG, nobody even knew they went back to PSCNG. And that's how it works. It goes on to say, if you read the ending of it, that the GE program has helped Bluefield residents who participated hundreds of thousands of dollars in electricity bills since 2015, but recent changes in market conditions have made the plans less financially viable. The rate expired, they went out to auction again, the auction price was not cheaper, therefore, they went back. Not my words, Bluefield's words, that Ms. Frank Tantoni brought up. And it ends by saying, "No action is needed by residents and no disruption of electricity service will impair." It goes on to say, and this is a quote from the township manager, "The township of Bluefield will continue working with PSCNG and third-party energy providers to reduce energy costs for residents." Next month, Bluefield's going back out to the auction to hopefully get a cheaper price to keep maintaining a savings for the residents. That's the press release everybody's talking about. Right in there, it literally says to the manager that they will continue to work with energy providers. I personally spoke to the mayor, February, March, they're going back out. It's mathematically, it's a savings. I get it. It's different, people don't like different, I get all that. I also get there's people out there that are just looking for anything to rile people up. And it works sometimes, I get that. But we're here to educate people. I put a really long statement out there, I put links to different letters, the City of Linden put out a letter, City of Sinminton put a letter out, they're all linked there about how they're all renewing the program. It's mathematically impossible to pay more money. Because of the group buying, probably have six, eight thousand residential units, we get a cheaper rate, we lock that rate in. It's that simple. The only reason why Bluefield is out of it temporarily is because it works. It's because their rate expired, every two years you lock in, they went for the renewal, the rate was higher, everybody seamlessly went back into PSCNG, they didn't even know they went back. Didn't even know they went back. And Bluefield has given us a commitment, or the mayor at least told me in my face, February, March, they're going back out. And the township manager is quoted, and I'll read the quote for the third time, "The township of Bluefield will continue to work with PSCNG and third-party energy providers to reduce energy costs for our residents." So Ms. Frank Tantoni, when you read statements, you can't just cherry pick the stuff you want, you have to read the entire thing.
My boys live in Bluefield.
I'm sure their rates went up. I'm sure they did.
You know, you get me sick, you think you're the king. You're not the king, you're a representative of the people.
Thank you.
You know?
Okay. Anybody else? Sir? Mr. Tucci, can I trouble you to give a copy to everyone and also the township attorney?
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's a little warm in here, unfortunately, it might get a little warm. Sorry, a sec.
I have a question with that.
You're going to have to speak, I'll call on you though.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have a chance to speak.
Thanks, sir.
So, Frank Flesch, 132 Franklin Street. I'm referring to the resolution that's going to be number three on the consent agenda regarding BOIV and accepting it as the developer of the Belmont Avenue project and the Redeveloper Agreement. I've given you a packet and I'll reference the Facebook post that's at the beginning of it, it's from Mayor Melham's page, June 25th, 2018, "Great event tonight for the Melham team. We will have great relationships at all levels of government for the borough of Bellevle." There are some pictures there as well. I would like to bring your attention to the one on the bottom right, which is actually blown up on the second page. So this is a picture, this is a long picture of the fourth, of the fourth picture. It shows Councilman Graziano sitting at a table and the mayor right next to him, sitting at a table with BOIV developer Brian Stolar. I really don't know, from what I understand, this took place in the Nina's, I've never been there, so I don't know what it looks like or anything like that. And I really don't know what it was for because it doesn't show up on anybody's campaign finance reports that I can see. I, you know, I don't know what that's all about. And then the third page is also another picture showing Councilman DePena with the mayor and Township Attorney Stephen Martina. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm not sure that you can vote on this tonight or really any night, at least three of you, I don't think, can vote on this. One of the key tenets of professional ethics, especially in a political area, is to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And what that means, widely speaking, is that you need to avoid actions or such that the average person would look at and say, well, I don't know if this is, if this is right. I think this actually might be one of those examples. And just so I'm not accusing, telling tales out of school or talking out of a body part other than my mouth, I did call the Election Law Enforcement Commission yesterday just to speak to them about this. And the attorney I spoke to, he basically was very general about it. He said, well, look, he said, it's probably a little troubling that you can't find this in campaign election reports anywhere. He said, but I really can't say much about this particular thing. I asked him if there was any other, if you could tell me if there were any other inquiries or complaints made? And he said, well, I really can't tell you, but I'm sure that, you know, there very well may have been. Okay. And he basically said, look, if this really troubles you, you should probably get in touch with the Division of Elections. I said, okay, thank you. You know, I wasn't going to do that because I didn't want, I didn't want to speak to you all in the open forum here about this. I think that the average person, if you talk to them, if they saw these pictures, they'd say, well, if this gentleman is someone who has been pursuing development in town and is at an event in a fundraiser with, with the mayor-elect, I understand it was before three of you were sworn in, but with the mayor-elect and two council people-elect at this fundraiser, it may look a little unseemly. I'm not accusing anybody of anything because I have no evidence of it. Okay, I wasn't there. But I do believe that this should, especially the two council persons at large and the mayor, I believe you should refuse yourself from voting on this. And I'll say to the other board council people here, if you were at this fundraiser, I would implore you that you have an ethical obligation to avoid the appearance of impropriety and I ask you to refuse yourselves as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm just going to clarify because I love when people stand up there and they, they speak like they know what they're talking about. Number one, there was a statement made that this was not a fundraiser or somebody that
Number one, there was a statement made that this was not a fundraiser or somebody that was not found. Rather than calling ELEC, if you just go to ELEC, this was a fundraiser before I was elected mayor. And the ELEC forms and files and applications are all there. So there's nothing to be impropriet--. I will say that the owner of this property, was the owner of this property before I was even elected. All of his planning board approvals, everything else that went through this council went back and forth, were all there before, before I was mayor. This was a fundraiser. It is duly noted in ELEC, so you are absolutely incorrect. And being there and being on ELEC actually is transparent. And showing if it's a reportable contribution, it's listed on ELEC, there's a reason for that. It's because it is open and transparent, and therefore there is no appearance of impropriety out in the open. If that's the case, this gentleman sitting right next to me was a town attorney, we shouldn't have been able to vote on him then, I guess. So you got, you can't have it both ways. Either, either it's okay, and fundraising is a part of what we do, and what we do all the time, ELEC is also part of it. For those who don't know, that's the Election Law Enforcement Commission. You can go online and see every single reportable contribution that I raised and that my running mates raised. It's all there. The reason why it's all there, because you put it out in public, therefore there's no appearance of impropriety. So it's nice that when you stand here and you show pictures and people leave and think that, "Wow, there's something really bad going on there." There's not. It's all out there in the public. And I will go a little further and say that our running mates that we ran against, who were here for 12 and 16 years, checked their ELEXes. I don't think they ever had a reportable contribution over $300, where all of my contributions are there. So I know that people like to take my contributions and put them online. They're online because I put them there. Okay? That's, you have to understand, nobody's digging around finding checks or finding photos of people handing me money. It's a check, it's reportable, it goes online, it's open and it's transparent. That fundraiser was before I was mayor. Not that I'm against it once I was mayor, but it was before I was mayor. The owner was the owner, and all the approvals from the council and the planning board have been done before I was mayor. So while it sounds interesting, unfortunately, it's not the smoking gun that, that you may think you have. Anybody else? Mr. Frank Tantoni for part two.
Well, you're complimenting me again. You're correct. All those things get reported to ELEC. However, Mayor, there's been many politicians who report legitimately all their contributions. But then later, after an investigation is commenced, they find out that these contributions and the politicians who got them violated the pay-to-play law. Because if you got these contributions and under the pay-to-play law, like you gave to Remington and Varnik, $20,000 contract, after they contributed the $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 for your campaign, that's violation of pay-to-play law. And you're correct, you did report it.
I respectfully disagree with you. It is absolutely not.
So that's how we found out that you got there, because you honestly reported.
I did.
But then, and you admitted, when I brought it up, when I read in the resolution, the pay-to-play section, your first comment was, "Oh, I didn't know that was in that resolution." I said, "You voted on it tonight, you don't know it's in there." So we'll see what happens down the road. But already you've got several pay-to-play violations.
I have absolutely not one pay-to-play violation. Absolutely not one. Absolutely not one. Show it, show it.
Remington Varnik.
That's a violation.
Yeah, they gave you over $3,000, you gave them $20,000 contract.
Says you. It is absolutely not a violation.
Well, we'll see.
You will see, but don't say it is when it's not.
They gave you over $1,500, you gave them a $4,950 contract for a questionable project to investigate the intersection of Main and Roosevelt Avenue. You know, for what? $5,000? They're getting some of their campaign contributions back. But we'll let it, you know, we'll see what happens, because, you know, some people, you don't have to give them the show. They dig their own grave. Again, we're going through the same thing from down to several years. Now, all this, since you got elected, you said, "This year's different, the budget's gonna be on time." It was due February 10th, it's not there. And Mr. Tucci, this is his favorite saying, "I'm just waiting for a few more figures." Well, all you have to do is use zero-based budgeting. I don't care about last year. That's what I used to tell my department heads when I was in office. You tell me what you need next year. In addition to that, you can introduce a budget. That doesn't mean you're gonna pancho yet. You also have, by mistake, you have an amendment process. So if revenues don't come in as expected, or revenues exceeded, you can amend your introduced budget. We're not asking for a final budget at this point. We're asking you to follow the law and introduce a budget at time. And not keep going, I mean, this goes on, last year, Mr. Tucci, I think we went to August or September by the time we got a budget. And every meeting, he's a nice guy, Mr. Tucci, very gracious. He said yes, he said everything. Oh, yeah, I'm just waiting for a few more figures. Two weeks from now, that meeting, he said, "I got everything, but we're waiting for four more figures," you know, and then a month after that, and before you know it, we're into August, September, October with a budget. So let's go there. The other thing, when I spoke about Mr. Tucci's white paper, the next meeting, you come back and you countered my stuff.
I read the rest of it.
Well, let me tell you something. The, not like, northjersey.com, through an open request, did a thing here. Here's some of the statistics. Cambridge Heights, the developers depicted it as a place where empty nesters and millennials, children growing up, and there would be no children. Well, it started at 73 students in the Nutley school system, and it went to 163. And this was over a year ago. East Gate of Nutley was only gonna be millennials, no kids in the school system. It went from 10 kids to 41 in just five-year period. So, you know, you wanna--
So you started out two weeks ago complimenting him, but then because I read the rest of it, now, now you're going another way.
You know, we play the same game, Mayor.
I know, I read everything. I read everything.
You want to be able to figure, you know, I could, there's things to read and there's things to not read, what you want to do there. But this high-density development, and that Monday, it was a big article about now, something I predict, not only I predict, I've got a newspaper article two years ago about this high-density housing is a bubble. Well, guess what? Monday's paper, Montclair is now running into that problem. Big problems in Montclair with the overdevelopment of that town.
You need to wrap it up.
And the people are up in arms about the Lacanana Plaza and the Sienna Project. By the way, the Sienna Project, I believe, is the same developer on the Belmont Avenue property. And this Belmont Avenue property--
And you did a wrap it up, Mr. Tucci.
Besides this conflict of interest, you've got super, super contaminants there. The developer's environmental agent said that they're not gonna remove them, this arsenic and all these other terrible chemicals. They're gonna cap them with the concrete for the foundation of building. So I'm asking, I said, "What's that?" And then it won't rise up and emit? He said, "No." I said, "Right, it's gonna go sideways."
Mr. Frank Tantoni, I need you to wrap it up. That project has been long put to bed by the council, by the planning board. You've had many opportunities to discuss this. You're, you're well past your time, Mr. Frank Tantoni.
You guys, you guys gotta finalize the project. So I'm asking you not to appoint the guy, because he's got some problems. Some of the projects in Montclair alone have mold. There's some problems--
Mr. Frank Tantoni, I need you to wrap it up.
All right. Sidewalk restaurant, high-driven. Restaurant's got tables on it. Do we have any regulations and do you need a permit for that?
This is not a good one, yes.
Do you need a permit to put tables on the sidewalk?
To call it a cafe, you do, yes.
Okay. I got a call from two people, one with a wheelchair and one with a carriage. You got a restaurant on Doralman Street that put railing around its tables and all that. You need handicap doors that have to be 36 or 40 inches wide, you know, passageway. You got railings cementing into the ground 32 inches from the fire hydrant. A lady babysits for her twin grandchildren, can't get the carriage to there, has to go in the street there. Wheelchair, can't go in there. Will you look at that?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Finally, Mr. Tantoni, I saw your comments about the vaccinations, and you want government out of our lives. And I, I may not agree to the vaccination.
Please address your chair, Mr. Frank Tantoni.
But I hope you want government out of our life when it comes to this energy deregulation also.
Thank you. And I, I will compliment Mr. Frank Tantoni, and unlike his compliments, it's legit one. I've agreed with him on the, for a long time now, on the budget process. And we were committed all of the end of last year into the beginning of this year, we're still in February, to get a budget far earlier than we had last year, but absolutely. March 19th, we're looking for it.
Is the re-bid state.
Okay. Mayor, just clear this up about this program with the energy. So basically, the ordinance was passed. So you're saying that the ordinance does not take effect until after the public hearings? If I understood that correctly, or am I wrong?
The ordinance, well, I'll let you finish, will you? Is that the only question?
Yeah, one more thing. All right. So I just wanted clarification on that, because I didn't quite understand, because normally ordinance takes effect after so many days, after the second hearing, after, you know, you publicize it in the paper. So that's my question here. Also, I was wondering if we could start something, because I'm looking at these resolutions, like you've got three, four, five, six, seven, all of them. When you look up the agenda on the internet, all it tells me is a heading. If all the language was there, I think we can read it. So maybe we could start that program, like Resolution 3, number four. At least I have an idea. Probably wouldn't even have to get up half the time and even ask you anything. Can we start that?
We, if that's the end of your comments?
No.
It is, or no?
No, I got one more.
Okay. I thought you had one more before. I'm gonna forget my answer.
And since, since, you know, I was looking at this, can you explain Resolution 3 to us? That's all I have to tell.
Sure.
Explain, because like I said, it's only a heading, so I don't understand it.
Well, it was also a heading when you were mayor, too. There was an agenda which--
Oh, I know, I know.
I just wanna make sure.
But you know what? You're right. Because what we need is more transparency.
Right. And what you got there is a livestream camera, and you got a website that's got a lot of information on it. We're live streaming the meetings, we're on social media, we have a lot more transparency than we had just a year ago.
But just this, yeah. And you're right.
It's, it's not that easy, though. And I've asked my IT people that when we do our IT upgrades, should we do that? There's redactions that have to happen, you just can't arbitrarily post all the resolutions and everything. There's software that we're looking at that does that. The Board of Education just got the software a year or two ago. We're looking at that same company. So that answers that question, I think. The energy company, as I stated, we had to create, we had to vote for the program, which then created the marketing aspect of it. The 20-day rule is just a, 20 days after the second reading to--
For anyone that's--
Recent, rescind the period, but it's gonna happen, where we do the two, at least they're saying two, we're calling for three, mailings to everybody, let everybody come to a public hearing, hear what, hear what's going on, nobody's bill's changing, we're not switching anybody over yet. Let them come to a public meeting, let them opt out if they wanna opt out. Or in the meantime, if you don't even trust the opt-out and you don't wanna fill out the piece of paper, a simple, a very simple phone call to PSCNG on a notebook, on a note change, it's like a block on your account, you, you won't change. It's, it's that simple. You can do that right now if you want. You can do that right now. Call up PSCNG, takes five minutes, note change, put a block on your account, and you won't come over. That's fine. But I will say, the program actually allows, and there's a specific reason for this, the program actually allows you to get in if you initially opt out. Once people realize it's not the program they think it is and they want to actually get in, it does let you in after the fact. So by all means, if you question it, call PSCNG, put a block, come out to our public hearings, come out to our public forums, sign the opt-out letter if you want, by all means do that. But we had to create the program in order to start the advertising working so we can educate. We couldn't educate people and have the company come in and educate people before we, we kinda hired them. So I, I get it, I would have liked to do it a little differently. We're bound by that, though. That's, that's the only way to do that. And what was your, I forgot.
Resolution 3.
Resolution 3 has nothing to do with a pilot. This is something that we're going forward with the redevelopment agreement. And again, this is a process, I want everybody to know this, this is a process that started a long time ago.
Right.
Did not start today. This was voted on by the previous council, this was sent to the planning board, there were public hearings at the council level, there were public hearings at the planning board level. This is back now. We're just literally, this is a redevelopment agreement, letting them have access to the property as the redevelopers. Next will come is the plan, is a redevelopment plan. This has nothing to do with a pilot and like that. We're just giving them redevelopment status over that property. That's all it is. Anybody else? Sir?
Nick Caddo, 72 Bell Street. I'd like to do something a little different and not attack the council.
You're fired.
As Councilwoman DePena said, April is Autism Awareness Month, and those of you who have been on the council before know that I come every year to ask for a resolution as April 2nd is the Autism Light It Up Blue Campaign. I am a 12-year member and currently the co-chair of the Autism Speaks Walk, Chair and Committee. And again, just coming to the council to ask for, once again, to recognize April 2nd as Light It Up Blue Day, whereas the country, not only, not only the country, the world lights up blue from Dubai to the Empire State Building. And if we can maybe properly this year light up the town blue on April 2nd, the autism community will certainly, certainly appreciate that. And I'd also just like to say one other thing about April 6th, as Autism a Month is April, April 6th, we will be having this color run. And it is on the site, I would really encourage everyone to go to the, to the township website and look at that color run. What we are doing is we are partnering with the, with the schools, and each school, I did an assembly, and each school will get a portion of the money they raised to go back to their home at schools, as well as some money will come back to the committee. And we will give all of that money, plus the expenses from the run, to various autism organizations, and also even back to our special services department of the schools. As many may or may not know, we have a very, very high population of autism children and classes in our school system, and they need to be helped and recognized. And this is just an awareness event for everyone, and I would hope that everyone would take advantage and continue to promote it for us. And I thank you. I look forward to working with you. If there's any information you need in regards to autism, Autism Speaks and Walk and everything else, you know how to reach me, and I would appreciate and do anything I can to help with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back and speak at any time you want. Anybody else?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Flag Street. Just a few, three quick things. Firstly, I want to acknowledge your efforts to Go Green, the green initiatives that you have, Gabby helping the township with this matter. Just for your information, the high school Board of Education is actually hoping before this year is out to have a full array of solar panels, not only on the roof of the high school, but we're also putting in car stalls, so there's gonna be a solar array covering the entire parking facility. We're going to have so much revenue, this is all being done, by the way, no expense to the taxpayers, but the revenue stream that's coming to us, we're hoping that it's gonna be able to allow us to actually provide air conditioning to the entire high school. So part of the referendum, we're putting in the equipment, the infrastructure, but we still need condensers on the rooftops to enable air conditioning. The money from this solar project is going to allow us to get the condensers. So with all likelihood, this will be the last summer where there won't be air conditioning in the high school, starting next year, we'll have a fully air-conditioned building. As far as the budget is concerned, its introduction, you've quoted a couple times tonight that it's going to be introduced on March 19th. But according to the agenda tonight, the very end, it says that the next meeting is the 12th. So are you going to introduce it on the 12th, the 19th, or the 26th?
Yeah, I don't believe Mr. Tucci meant introduction. I meant, Mr. Tucci, can you clarify that date? That's the date we've been informed it's been, the budget introduction has been moved to the 19th. So the closest date to that, if it's ready by the 12th, we'll introduce on the 12th. If it's not, we'll introduce the following year.
All right, I hope that, well, I hope before the month of March is over, the budget is introduced. Because as Mr. Franklin Tony pointed out, according to the state, temporary budget is supposed to be introduced in the first third of days and then introduced. The budget itself is supposed to be introduced by February 10th.
Is that the date, Mr. Tucci, that was just pushed? I'm sorry, is that the date that was just pushed to March?
Yes.
And those are target dates. You're absolutely right. They're target dates that's put out by the state provisional local government services. All right? And there are many, many municipalities who do not have all the information at their fingertips to introduce by that date. That's always the goal. That's always what we strive for. But if we can't introduce by that date, I would much rather introduce a responsible budget than an irresponsible budget that's misleading.
Well, if the budget is introduced before the end of March, especially before March 26th, it'll be a little extra birthday gift to me. My birthday's March 26th. It'll be the first pilot. Every year since you've been town manager, we've heard.
I wasn't aware it was your birthday.
That would be a perfectly acceptable birthday gift to me if the budget's introduced by March.
I'll do my very best.
All these years, we've heard the same promises. Next year's gonna be different. We're gonna have a budget introduced early. Inevitably, we don't see it until.
No, 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 you're misstating. They're not promises, they're statements of fact. Okay? So we'll just leave it at that.
Last thing I want to comment on tonight is the Belmont Avenue project. Yes, it's true that the planning board hearings took place before you became mayor. But just as an FYI, if you don't know this already, that site is still listed as an active contamination site by the state DEP. And I have the numerous reports showing the intensity of the contamination. Iron levels 150 times beyond acceptable limits, aluminum 100 times greater, mercury 20 times greater, arsenic 16 times greater, lead 15 times. List goes on and on. That site is still a dangerously contaminated site. And I have to ask you, you have a responsibility as our leaders to protect all the residents of Belleville, to allow this project to go there down the road, to have residential there. You're putting numerous people at risk. If you go back to the testimony with videotapes or transcripts, when this application was heard before the planning board, the applicant said how, when they, if they're allowed to start building, when they start doing the excavation, their construction people will be equipped with respirators and oxygen masks. Well, that's great for them, but what about everyone else in the township? I mean, in my opinion, what they're doing essentially is asking for a Band-Aid to be put on the site. Small concrete cap, the real contamination is not being addressed. And I don't think if they were forced to remove it, they would not, they would abandon the project. So you have a lot of things to consider here down the road if you allow them to start construction. If you want any of this information, I'm more than happy to share it with you. But please note that this site is still heavily contaminated. And since Ms. Burke lives a stone's throw away from the site, to try to soften this project, the applicant said they were going to put a dog park in place. I know how, what an animal lover you are. Please, for the sake of Sophie, never allow her access to that dog park. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheldon. So just for the benefit, and I'm not gonna have this debate right now, but there are some new people in the room and there's people watching. We've heard a couple people talk about this particular project and the contamination. I'm not gonna speak to that at this moment, but I find it interesting that the people that talk about the contamination there in the property never talked about that contamination while the property was there vacant. Because they're under no obligation to clean contaminated property. That parking lot, if indeed it is contaminated to the level that they speak of, it's under no obligation to get cleaned. It can stay there forever. So the fact that people come here and talk about the contamination now, when they didn't talk about it when the property was vacant, what we're doing now is that if there is a development there, that developer has to clean the property, clean it to DEP standards. So development is actually gonna clean the property as opposed to letting the property stay contaminated and stay vacant. I opt for not being contaminated and not being vacant. I opt for cleaning it and getting a rabble lot. That's where I stand on this.
Regent Franklin Kirby, not claiming any.
Character, DEP standards. Anybody else? Nobody else? Okay. We have a motion. We're animating more people to speak.
Mr. Mayor, what project are you talking about?
Sir, sir, we're the park.
Jim Kirin, 13-15 Hill Street. What property are you talking about on Belmont Avenue? Where the parking lot is with supermarket?
Basically with the parking lot. It's the parking lot closer to, was it Newark?
Frank's. All right, a couple doors down where that used, where that car lot, Nissan parking lot is, where the cars are stored and so forth.
We'll further up by that.
I'm sorry?
Further up.
Yeah, well, where the cars are stored.
No.
Time out, time out. He's not here. He's talking about a different property.
I'm talking about a different property. Where the cars are stored, I think it was a Nissan dealer or whatever. Back then, about the 1970s, 1980s, there was a company called the Grodd Edison on that property. And I believe they made batteries on that property. I was a tractor trailer driver and I made deliveries to that company on that site. And they had African-American workers working in there. Black soot was all over the, on the property, all over. And even on the employees. And later on, after their shift, they would take a shower and so forth. That soot and everything would be going into the ground. So that property is, I would say, is contaminated as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm Evelyn Kenez-Curden. A newbie in town, you talked about new people, and I'm one of them. I've been living in the town of Belleville for about five years, since I married Mr. Curden. I'm not gonna attack you because I don't know you. But this is my first meeting and all I can say is, for now, is wow. I really don't know a lot of people in Belleville, just by people like me that know my husband, who's been here since he was a kid. I do know you're my neighbor. I know you live down the street from me. But, and that's all. But my question was on the energy thing. And again, I'm not here to attack you. It's, when you said that you did the vote before you did with the help, without getting the public to come and give you opinion as our residents here that voted you in. I'm gonna be honest, I didn't vote for you, I just voted for my husband, told me to vote 'cause I didn't know him. I'm gonna be honest. So, but the elections do come up. And my goal, being a resident of this town, is to get to know who's who and what they do. So I'm a little bit like introducing myself here and just asking a question in the aspect of you voting in the vote of electricity before you had the public people. To me, it feels like you got the cart before the horse. Okay? And what I'm saying to you is, the people that elected you, okay, you should have showed them the respect of getting their opinion first before you even did something like this. Because we voted, they voted you in. I can't say we, because I wasn't me.
I understand.
But remember, as I get to know, I know who I'm gonna go and that'll be my decision. So as I'm seeing and progressing what's happening in the town, I see people in this meeting tonight attack you, I see people not attacking you. But the problem is, have you ever thought about working with the people that are, that are attacking? And they have something behind them. Okay? You know, you should have had, to me, I think you should have had the public thing first. And as a mayor, as a new person with changes, because change is good, you should have gotten that feedback before you even as much as gotten this vote. And therefore, you would have had something to work from. 'Cause if it was that way, I would have came to that meeting and would have found out information and would have had questions. Now everybody's mad and everybody's saying, nobody knows what to do. And you're saying one thing and then another thing is being posted in Facebook. Everybody's out of it.
You should listen to what we say and not what's posted on Facebook.
Well, I'm listening to what everybody is saying, and then I'm gonna make my own resolution.
That's your first mistake. You should listen to the people that read everything and voted on it.
Well, I'm reading everything that everybody's saying, what you're saying and everybody. And then I'm gonna come up to my own conclusion of what I think this should be done. Okay? Just like, just like when you posted on Facebook about redeveloping Belleville. Well, that's nice and good. Well, how about helping, as far as I know, from what my husband tells me, you grew up in this town as a young man, right? As a little boy. You rode your bike around the streets of Belleville as a little kid and went to that famous ice cream store that every, my husband even talks to me about that. It's not here anymore. So, I wish it was.
Lemonade?
Yeah, I don't know, it's an ice cream store that everybody do about make egg cream sodas that you can't believe. But here's my story. When you came in as mayor, you came in as a new face, because the other gentleman that sat here sat here for many years. And basically, from what I see, nothing was done. So now it was your start to shine. And the first thing that people were saying when I was going to all these political meetings, including one of yours, was the taxes, the taxes, houses and the foreclosures that were in Belleville. I mean, you walk around Belleville and all you see is houses that are abandoned. Like you posted on your Facebook, houses that are not taken care of. People walk away from their houses. Well, as a young mayor that grew up in this county, why aren't you not helping the people that live in this, in this?
So with regard to the taxes, I think if a program to save people on their energy bills is actually helping to offset the taxes.
No, it's not, because you have people that are losing their houses and stuff. You should go out to Trenton and find out, hey, what's screwing the people in my town Belleville with their taxes and with their stuff? Let me help the people. The people feel like you're not helping them.
I can hear you, but respectfully disagree with you.
I don't wanna be the person that's gonna have to buy attention. I'd like to work with you, I'd like to sit down with you one day and just have a talk and see what your aspects are. But in my opinion, about you getting the vote before getting the public to let you know how they feel and their ideas, you got the cart before the horse. Because now everybody's in mixed, in mixed rally. And half of them come here and attack you and half of them don't know what they're doing.
I do need to wrap up. Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
Just tell you, you know.
Thank you.
And as a resident, that pays taxes.
Sure. Mr. Flashman?
Pamela Flashman, 132 Franklin Street. I bring this to the front of the council again. I know it's been a long time coming about the lovely people still making that turn or turning into the other lane on Franklin again. I know it's a town, I know it's a county road. I know I've been told that you guys are gonna call, you know, the county, see what can be done about it. I was coming home today from work and there was a guy behind me and near the barber shop, cut from the barber shop, all the way down Franklin. I mean, it's getting to be a point of being ridiculous. The good news is the firehouse is now reopened. Yay! And it will cut that down once the spring and the summer and the fall come, 'cause the guys will have the door open. Obviously, it's too cold to have it open now. And, you know, hopefully that will turret. So again, I ask, can we please call my little buddy Joe DiVincenzo and see what can be done about that? That's number one. Number two, with all the comments and criticisms of the evening of the, tonight, we don't wanna come up here week after week or meeting after meeting and attack. We truly don't. We wanna work with everybody on the council. We want a better Belleville. And the things that you have done so far have been great. And you're moving forward and you're doing all new things. Wonderful. You and I have commented that when the former mayor was here, and he was still mayor, I made a comment how disrespectful he was to the people. And you said, oh, after so many years, you know, you might be in that same boat of having the level of being yelled at year after year. You're less than a. Of having the level of being yelled at year after year. You're less than a year. And tonight, you showed nothing but disrespect to the members of this audience, which I don't think is right or a call for. As the young lady said, we elected you. And you may not agree with everything we say, and you don't have to agree with everything we say. And yes, there's gonna be debates and there's gonna be discussions. But we sit here respectfully and listen to you and listen to all of the changes that you're gonna make. You better well sit here and listen to us respectfully. As members of the audience are speaking, I don't want to see people. Speaking, I don't want to see people having conversations up there, people looking away. I expect every single person to be looking at every single people in this audience. You want our respect? We give you our respect, you have to give us the same respect.
Respect goes both ways, respect is respect.
You're telling, you're telling, excuse me, I'm Italian-Irish, talking in English. You're telling me about respect?
I'm just making a statement.
No, no, please, do not interrupt. Okay? You expect it, we expect it. I fully understand. Respect goes both ways.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I need a drink.
Motion made second, clerk oral.
Councilmember Cosrell.
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melon?
Yes.
Motion move.
Ma'am? Second?
I just wanna pull eight.
Eight, you said?
Eight.
Anybody else? Nope. We have a motion, move second, clerk oral.
Yes.
Motion made second, clerk oral.
Councilmember Cosrell.
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melon?
Yes.
Resolution number eight?
Number eight, I'm gonna move it, but I wanted to talk for a second. In 1970, a young, a young man, a young man graduated from Belleville High School. His name was Lonny Bunch. Lonny Bunch is now the, I guess you would call him the founding director of the Smithsonian Institute's National Museum of African-American History and Culture. Yeah, he's curious, too. I mean, I get to talk to Lonny every once in a while. He's done a phenomenal job. He's also on a commission with, under Obama and Bush for the White House. He brought great pride to us here in this town. And I just wanted to honor him, and that's really what this is about. Honor him and recognize him in the Black History Month.
I know you spoke to him often, I spoke to him today.
Yeah.
So it was actually an honor today. I was at the library setting up for the event tomorrow. And I got a phone, actually, I was on the phone with you, I think. And I got a phone call from Washington DC. And it was just awesome to hear him and speak to him. I have a story you want me to share tomorrow, which I will definitely do.
He's just, he's an amazing, I mean, I don't know if you've seen it, but he's been on TV many times, the last of which, he's actually in the Bank of America commercial. You'll see him, and they honor him for what he's accomplished.
And he loves Belleville, loves Belleville.
He loves it.
He gave you a story to share tomorrow night. Okay, so we have that. Let's vote on resolution number eight. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made second, clerk oral.
Councilmember Cosrell. Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melon?
Yes.
Anything? Oh, we got the grant.
Oh, Mayor, I have a resolution to apply and accept the 2019 Safe and Secure Grant from the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety. How many reasons, ma'am?
Do we have to?
Whereas the township of Belleville is authorized to apply for and accept the grant in the amount of $60,000 from the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for the 2019 Safe and Secure Grant for the subaward period of June 1/19 to 1/31/20. Whereas this grant funding will be used towards the salaries of two police officers within the Belleville Police Department. And the township of Belleville shall pay all free benefit expenses and all costs in excess of the grant award as a match. Therefore, be it resolved by the governing body, the township of Belleville, that the above referenced grant is hereby accepted and Mayor Michael Melon is hereby authorized to execute grant documents for the township as an authorized representative thereunder, as the representative for the township of Belleville. You further resolve that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety.
Make motion.
Second? Motion made second, clerk oral.
Councilmember Cosrell.
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melon?
Yes.
Any other new business?
I have some new business.
Sure.
I would like to introduce an ordinance to rescind the ordinance approved on February 11, 2019, regarding the gas and electric aggregation. I have heard from many constituents, and they all feel that government should not be involved with this. They should be the ones to choose whether they want to stay with public services, electric and gas. And I think the people have spoken, and I feel that we are the ones that should choose who we want to go with. So I'll introduce a couple of other things real quickly. And Belleville Energy Aggregation Ordinance. Bloomfield has recently opted and returned to the Public Service Enterprise Group Energy Program due to rate adjustment that makes the third-party energy provider more expensive. The switch is intended to save residents money on their own electricity bill. Service Enterprise Group energy program due to rate adjustment that makes the third-party energy provider more expensive. The switch is intended to save residents' money on their home electricity bill. The objection is based on the Bloomfield experience, which initially saved residents' money, but ultimately cost them more in the long run, forcing them to return to P S E N G. I'm fearful that the same fate or worse could be forced upon the residents of Belleville should this ordinance take effect. For all these reasons, this ordinance should not be allowed to become law. I have Councilman Notary, myself, and Councilman Robel for this so far.
Can I, can I speak to, because I will second.
You want, because I'm going to-
I will second. And I, deregulation of electricity in New Jersey started in 1999 and we all know that there was a lot of scams, a lot of things going on. The ordinance in question here tonight is based on a state law put in place, my belief is, to protect the consumer against these scams. The aggregators must be certified by the state of New Jersey. People can bid on this. There's, I think, believe there's 30 of them. And I've done some initial research. There is a state specified process that must be followed. So, Mrs. Kirin, when you were talking about having it ahead of time, you really, the only thing you can-
We had to follow the process.
You have to follow that process as designated by the state of New Jersey. We are guided by the state law. Just so you know, because I don't even think we just came up with this ourselves. The third is, there is an automatic opt-out. If the bidding process does not yield the savings, it reverts back to P S E N G.
Thank you.
I believe the council's original intent was to help the community save money. I truly believe that and that was my intent. It was not to create anxiety. It was not. No one here wants to do that. Based on what we have recently seen in Bloomfield, it looks like the current market conditions would yield little, if any, savings. So that's why they are reverting back to P S E N G.
They are going back out in March.
But, yeah, and at this point, I don't, I don't feel it's really worth the anxiety. So I do support Marie and John. So-
Thank you.
I just object to the fact that Councilman Notary is not here to state his opinion. So I don't know if I would take, I would love to hear from him. But I will say this, because obviously I'm not going to vote in favor of rescinding this. I will say that this item was placed on a council work session, which previous council and years ago, there were never such thing as work sessions, actually. We listed this item as a work session. It was advertised. We had the vendor here. Councilman Burke was present for that. I don't remember any questions. I don't remember any issues there. We then voted on first reading for this. We then voted on second reading for this. Second reading had a public participation. The vendor was here, as well as a member of the State Board of Public Utilities sat right here. I don't remember any questions, Ms. Burke. I just find it now, after the fact. And I get it, there's a lot of miscommunication out there. There's a lot of people out there that have reasons to misconstrue everything we're doing because they keep thinking that's the magic bullet to derail the progress we're having. And the fact that there's four, five, six, eight people here today talking about it in a township of 40,000 and maybe 100 online, I don't think it warrants that. I think there was every opportunity. We caucused this then. We had a discussion about it. We had the vendor here. We then, at a later time, brought it up for ordinance on first reading. We then brought up a second time with a public participation then. We had a member of the Board of Public Utilities here. No questions were asked. Everybody keeps pointing to Bloomfield and if you actually read the Bloomfield press release, it supports that the program works and that they actually want to continue energy aggregation. So with that said, there's no point in laboring and I think I know where everybody stands, which seems to be different than where they stood a few weeks ago. But I guess there's a, is there a motion in a second?
Yes, there is.
So just to be clear, Kelly, how works a yes vote is a vote to rescind?
A yes vote is a vote to rescind.
I have no intention of giving that for them.
It would be a resolution, not an ordinance.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution to rescind.
If it's voted yes.
Time out. Can you even rescind an ordinance by resolution?
Within the 20 days.
You have, no, you have more than 20 days for that.
I don't know, I don't know if you can rescind an ordinance by resolution.
You can.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I agree with you. But if you just want to make the public aware of where you stand on, I owe me, but to reflect, I do not think Councilman Notary should be included in that because he's not here to cast a vote.
Well, he did sign because he couldn't make the meeting. He's here.
You can't, you can't, you have to press a new one.
A new one. Well, let's see where the resolution goes and then we'll see if we want to.
So is it an ordinance or a resolution?
It's a resolution.
I just don't want my name on it because I don't think it's good for the people. I had loads of feedback and I'm not going to do it.
An ordinance to amend an ordinance.
Right, right.
Is that what this is? No, no, it's not amending and rescinding.
It's rescinding.
The hearing is rescinding, not amending. So we're doing the ordinance on first reading.
On first reading.
Right. It's an ordinance introduction to rescind.
The previous ordinance.
Exactly. Yes, yes.
So a no, okay. So a no vote on first reading?
First reading, right.
Just introduce it.
Okay. Clerk call roll.
Cosrelli.
Yes.
Dependant?
No.
Graziano?
No.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Mulberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
That's fine. Just tell them my name's on it.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second.
That's fine. That's fine.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second.
That's fine. That's fine.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second.
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second.
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second.
Yes.